Good evening. My name is Amy Frazier and I'm the President and CEO of the Culpeper Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the Culpeper Chamber of Commerce, I'm pleased to welcome you to the Culpeper County Candidate Forums. I ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. We appreciate your attendance tonight as we aim to provide you with informative sessions. Candidate forums are designed to provide voters with an opportunity to learn more about the individuals running for office. By attending a candidate forum, we hope that U.S. voters can gain a better understanding of each candidate's stance on key issues, evaluate their communication skills, and make an informed decision when casting your ballot on November 4th or before. We kindly ask that you refrain from any outbursts during the program. In the interest of ensuring a safe and respectful environment, any disruptions will result in the individual being asked to leave. Additionally, we ask that you please hold all applause until the end of each session, and please do not applaud after each candidate response. As we're streaming live tonight on Culpeper Media Network, please remain seated during the forum. Candidates do not receive questions beforehand. Candidates, you will receive two minutes for your introductions, two minutes to answer each question, and two minutes to make a closing statement. Candidates are reminded that this is a forum and not a debate. Candidates are encouraged to speak directly to the audience and not to each other. We will be adhering to a strict timeline, and to stay on track, you will be cut off at the two-minute mark. Our moderator will be keeping time using a green, yellow, and red lighting system. The light will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds left and red when time is up. There will be a five-minute break between each session. Our moderator for the evening will be Professor Neil Maers. Neil Maers is a professor of marketing at Germana Community College, where he has taught since 2010. He currently serves as Chair of the Virginia Community College System Marketing Peer Group and President Emeritus of the Germana Faculty Senate, having previously held the role of State Senate President. In 2024, he was recognized as Germana's Teacher of the Year and also contributed to the statewide Transfer VA Initiative for Marketing. Neil teaches a range of business courses in multiple modalities, including HiFlex and Synchronous Online. He earned both his MBA and BA from the University of Rochester, New York, where he is originally from. Before entering higher education, Neil was Vice President of Sales and Marketing at Omni Services, a $300 million industrial services company in Virginia, and held leadership roles with several Fortune 100 firms. He holds certifications from Quality Matters, ACUE, Canvas, and is a certified practitioner of the Myers-Briggs Type Indicator. Thank you for joining us and to further your knowledge of this area. And without further ado, I'm pleased to pass it along to our moderator, Neil Maers.
Well, if we're ready, we'll go ahead and get started. These are our candidates here for town council. The first thing I will do is I do have one of the candidates, Whitney Gressman, is not here. So I'm going to read a message from her that she sent in. She said, "I'd like to thank the Culpeper Chamber of Commerce for the opportunity to engage as part of the 25 candidates forum. I'm sorry to miss this opportunity to engage in person, but I had pre-existing commitments to be overseas right now to predate my candidacy for town council. I am currently transitioning from a national security work primarily based on institutional capacity building across Africa to a focus on matters closer to home. In my capacity as a town council candidate, I aim to leverage my expertise in public affairs to foster a safer, more representative, and engaged Culpeper community. I believe that my master's degree in public policy and comprehensive experience across varying levels of governing bodies, spanning from local to national to international organizations, have prepared me well for the responsibilities of a town council member. The community concerns that I have heard the most strongly from my fellow town inhabitants are reflected in my four current priorities. One, economic growth with integrity, promoting sustainable development that respects Culpeper's heritage. Two, civic engagement, encouraging active community participation in governance. Three, community safety and well-being, enhancing public safety and community health. And four, educational excellence, strengthening local education and workforce development." Please connect with me via her email address or my Facebook page if you want to amplify or offer other community priorities. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration. I look forward to the opportunity to serve as your representative on Culpeper's Town Council." All right. Great. So that was a message from the candidate that was not here. So just a reminder, what we're going to be doing again is each one of you will have an opportunity to offer an initial two-minute address to myself as representative of the voters of the community. We will go through, and I have two highly secret questions here that I'm going to ask, and then you'll have a chance to do two minutes of closing remarks. I will try to mix things up in the order so everybody will kind of have a chance to go and experience the same situation. We're going to start with Mr. Amos. Would you please start us off, sir?
So first, I'd like to start by thanking the Culpeper Chamber of Commerce, as well as everybody, for taking time out to be here today. I also want to thank my wife for all the support she gives me every day. My wife and I moved to Culpeper in 2020 to set up roots. We had our firstborn child here, our daughter, so Culpeper will always be her home, and we hope to be here for a very long time. I am an architect by trade. I specialize in science and technology buildings for both corporate clients and universities. I also do city and master planning in that capacity as well. Within my company, I am the treasurer, and I'm also an owner, so I'm in charge of handling the budget of a company that has roughly the same budget as the town of Culpeper. And so why am I running? I feel like my professional experience will enable me to provide insight within the town council as it relates to town planning and land use. Also, with my background, I have a master's in business administration, like our moderator, so I think that that economics background will help us in terms of managing the budget. And then finally, I am a concerned citizen. There's been a significant amount of growth in the last few years, and it does not, to me, feel like there's been a lot of thought in terms of the long-term impact. We need to be making decisions for the town that enhance the town both short and long term, and I'm just really excited for this opportunity, and so I'd like to thank everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Amos. Next, we're going to have Mr. Brumfield Horner.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for being out here tonight, and thank you, Chamber of Commerce, for putting on this event and letting everybody speak. I believe that's very important for the community here, everybody. I grew up in the town of Culpeper. I was born and raised. Live out in Boston, and then my wife and I moved back in here in 2016 to raise a family. I have two girls, and I am a parent, a husband, and a small business owner, just for about one year now in the town of Culpeper. So that's been a very eye-opening experience for me. I'm running for town council as a way to give back and serve my community that has been so great to me and my family. I can't imagine raising my kids anywhere else, and so it's very important to me that my kids are well taken care of by the school system, and I think they're doing a great job. I want to run because I want to help deal with that. I also believe it's very important for there to be honest, transparent, local representatives with the best interests for Culpeper residents in mind. I believe I'm one of those candidates, and I also plan to bring that to town council if elected. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next, we're going to have Ms. Schmidt.
First of all, like everyone else, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for having us here tonight. This is a great opportunity, and I thank all of you all for being here and those who are watching on TV as well. My name is Janie Schmidt. I am currently serving on the Culpeper Town Council, and I'm also on the Planning Commission as well. And I hope to continue in these roles because we have so many things that are in the works right now. I would like to see those come to fruition, and I think it's a very exciting time for the town. I've resided in Culpeper County for the last 22, 25-year span. Some of that has been in the town now. I was born and raised in Falkir County and grew up on my grandparents' farm in the little town of Marshall. But I raised my three boys in Manassas, where I worked for 20 years at NOVAC, Northern Virginia Electric Co-op, in substation's transmission, engineering, and operations. And now during part of that tenure, I also was elected to be Business Manager and President of the Local Limans Union, Local 1737, which is very rare at that time for women in the U.S. I think there were only two of us. It was a good learning experience for me in a lot of ways, especially with the collective bargaining and negotiating, and I've carried that forward as well. In 1993, I moved to Atlanta, Georgia, and worked for an engineering firm, and also they provided power systems manufacturing equipment as well. There, I traveled extensively doing work for electric utilities, for water companies, for transportation companies. Since I've worked in engineering during my lifetime, my discipline and principles are geared toward evaluating situations, solving problems, gathering facts, and considering alternatives.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
Sure.
Next, we'll have Mr. Short.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Short. Thank you, Mr. Maers, for leading the conversation tonight, and for those of you who are here in the room or dialing in from somewhere else, thanks for tuning in. As a member of Culpeper Town Council, I have the privilege not just of serving here locally, but I get to represent our council and our town and other places across the Commonwealth. And inevitably, someone walks up when they find out I'm from Culpeper, and we have a great conversation. People love Culpeper. It's not just those of us who live at it, but people who live far away, they love Culpeper, and they're talking about what a great town, what a great privilege it is for us to live here. And they're right. But you know, Culpeper isn't just a tourism destination or a crossroads in history. Culpeper is our home, and it's worth fighting for, and that's why I'm running for reelection. I believe in three principles with our town. These are the same principles that I've used to govern over the last four years. And the first is preserve. We need to work hard to preserve the town's character and charm, and it's not just about aesthetics and what it looks like, but I'm talking about these old-fashioned values that makes Culpeper unique. And to do that, we need to be planning wisely. We have to steward these great resources that God's blessed us with, and that's this town. And then third, we need to protect our constitutional freedoms because that's where it rests, right? We didn't get our freedoms from the Constitution. We had our freedoms walking into the Constitution, and I think it's important that we keep that as a foundation. My wife, Vanessa, and I, we've lived here for about 20 years. We've raised our family here. We've grown deep roots into our community, and this continues to be the place that we call home. So that's why I'm running for reelection to Culpeper Town Council, to make sure that we're continuing to preserve, prepare, plan, and protect.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Next, Mr. Sternberg.
Well, thank you, everyone, for being here, and thank you very much to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event. My name is Max Sternberg. I have lived in Culpeper for almost 15 years. I grew up in Reston, Virginia, so I am intimately familiar with how a small town can grow very, very quickly. And I have a beautiful wife here and two wonderful sons that I'm very, very proud of. And our family, we love Culpeper. We fell in love with the low housing values when we initially came down here. I understand that's changed. But we also fell in love with the atmosphere. This is a wonderful, small town where you can get to know your neighbor, and, you know, it's big enough that you have several options for barbecue when you want to go get barbecue. I do love this town so much that I started my business here. I'm an insurance agent. I own the Better Insurance Agency. I'm a youth pastor here and shepherd a few dozen kids in order to make sure that they know Jesus. And I'm a Christian, and I would like nothing more than to elevate that level of care, not just for the people that I help with my business, not just for the kids that I shepherd as a youth pastor, but care for the community. Because this community is changing. It has changed in the past 15 years that I've been here, and we need to recognize that change and make sure that it's positive. There is such a thing as negative change, and I do believe that if you elect me as Town Councilman, that I can help usher in that positive change so that Culpeper can have a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sternberg. Last, Mr. Yow.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank everybody for being here tonight, especially the chamber and the audience. Of course, my name is Bill Yow. I'm a lifetime resident of Culpeper, was raised here, educated here, and eventually got a BS degree in economics from Virginia Tech. I've been a member of the town council for 33 years and your vice mayor for about 20 years, and have enjoyed every moment. I have a love and devotion for Culpeper, believing the two main purposes of a town council person is a fiduciary responsibility for your tax dollars and to provide a strong public safety department, which we do have. They're nationally certified. There are not too many police departments that are nationally certified. They've been certified three times for four-year terms, and they've just completed or in the process of completing another four years. I've also been endorsed by the Police Benevolent Association of Virginia on behalf of my support for our police department. I also believe, and I learned this a long time ago on council, that I reserve the right to change my mind when I get more information. That's very important. I'm chairman of the Finance Committee and can report that our town finances are in fine shape. We almost have no debt in our general fund, and we also have a high rating with Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, which means if we needed to borrow money, we could do that at a very, very favorable rate. I've served on numerous boards and commissions, past president of Rotary, CRI board member, and currently on the Cable Commission. I've been a downtown merchant and understand the business community. I'm currently retired. I'm married with four adult boys, eight grandchildren, and one great-grandchild, and one border dog named Hokey, bad for football, but he's looking forward to ACC basketball coming up. I'm a member of St. Stephen's, a Episcopal church where I have served in various leadership roles.
Thank you, Mr. Yow. All right. Let's go ahead and get started. We have our secret questions here. As I said yesterday, for those that remember Johnny Carson, I feel like Karnak, I'm reading the questions here. But what we're going to do is we're going to start from the other end. So now we're going to start with Mr. Yow. He will go first. And so what I'm going to do is for each candidate, I will read you the question, and then you will have two minutes to give your answer. So our first question for Mr. Yow here is, "What issues do you feel are currently under-presented in town decision-making, and how would you address them?"
Repeat the first part of that?
Yes, sir. "What issues do you feel are currently underrepresented in town decision-making, and how would you address them?"
I'm not too sure if anything's unrepresentative. I think we have several things that we can work on, namely some of our roadways. We're upgrading our parks, our pathways. We're waiting on the Virginia Department of Highways, for instance, to give us additional approval on certain roundabouts. We have one scheduled to go in near Walmart, another one at the intersection of 15 and 3, which we hope will help our transportation situation. We're having sidewalks built up on Madison Road and also on Brandy Road, and that's for pedestrian safety. We've had some accidents in town. We also have a new heritage park and bridge that I hope is going to be enjoyed by the community. And we have Davis Street, and the CRI program has just been monumental for downtown and tourism, which I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yow. Mr. Sternberg, I'll read the question again. "What issues do you feel are currently underrepresented in town decision-making, and how would you address them?"
You know, when I started this campaign, it was shocking to me about a number of things that I discovered because I'm not a career politician by any stretch of the imagination. But I started attending town council meetings, and I noticed a couple of things. I noticed that town council meetings tend to end very quickly on the whole, and I thought, you know what? We have a lot of concerns in this town. We have people that I talk to when knocking on doors, when I'm making phone calls, and they have valid, legitimate concerns. And, you know, why aren't we taking time during the town council to address some of those concerns? Well, you know, there's a process, of course, but what I've also discovered on this campaign trail is that there is not a lot of broadcasting of what the town and committee does. A lot of people in town don't even know who represents them. And so I do think that we need to kind of usher in kind of this, you know, 2025 mentality, let's start broadcasting town council meetings on social media all across it. Let's start enticing the younger generations to participate in committee meetings, in showing up to town council, because they're the future. They're the future of Culpeper, and I don't even think that they realize how this process works. I don't think that they can realize what we do in 15- to 20-minute town council meetings. And I think that if we entice that younger generation, we can solve more of these issues that people have concerns with, things like water quality, things like overgrowth for infrastructure is put in place. And so that's how I think we can represent underrepresented issues.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Sternberg. Next, Mr. Short, and I will read the question again. "What issues do you feel are currently underrepresented in town decision-making, and how would you address them?"
I like your answer, Mr. Sternberg. I think I'm going to steal that. That's a great idea. So having served on council here over the last four years, and I love this question too because it really holds us accountable to make sure that we're not just speaking about our strengths. So one of the questions that I ask my team once a month is, "What are we not thinking about? What is it that we're missing? What are you hearing that we haven't had a conversation about yet?" And I'd have to say what I'd like to see us, and wanting to hold myself accountable to do a better job of, is to talk about, oh, there's two issues, I think, two different sides of the same coin, affordable housing and homelessness. And I think if we can look at that affordable housing perspective, and there has been some great strides in there, the councils that have come before have put some things into action, and we've certainly carried them through here over the last few years. We do have three or four great affordable housing opportunities now here locally, but I do believe that there are stronger partnerships that we can work in that area and do a better job of, and I think that'd be a strong conversation to have. The second with the homeless, I was asked when I first came on council, "How are you going to solve homelessness?" And I actually went and did some research, and I discovered, I'm not really sure we can solve homelessness, but there sure is a lot more that we could do as a body to help that area. We have some great nonprofits and organizations here locally. We have the Culpeper Housing Shelter Department. We have Foothills Network. We have several great nonprofits and organizations that I think that we on council could do a lot better to come alongside and help coordinate and come out with some solutions for those that need that type of support. There's legislation in Richmond coming here over the next six months or so. I'd love to see a sketch behind that and make that a direct channel into Culpeper to help on both of those issues. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Schmidt, I'll read the question again. "What issues do you feel are currently underrepresented in town decision-making, and how would you address them?"
Very good question. You know, I'm all prepared to tell you the things that we have planned already, but this is a very good question, and I appreciate this. And some of my fellow companions up here have talked about some of these things, but certainly we've talked about affordable housing. We've just recently had an opening for the Parkside Apartments, and we have other apartments coming available as soon as they're finished, which should be in the next few months at Lightfoot Apartments. But we have other issues other than just apartments for people, you know, just the cost of housing in the town is enormous. I think about young couples, you know, who are about to get married and want to like to buy a house, or older people who are retiring and want to move down from their big houses to smaller houses. So those are things that we have to address as well. Joe talked about the homeless population. We have that, and people are homeless for a number of reasons, so not one solution's going to fit everybody. Those are things that we need to focus on because we have more homeless now than we had before, and it can very easily become an issue. We need to look at things like that, and we've talked about tiny home communities before. So moving forward, I think as we get ready to do the upgrade of the update of the comprehensive plan, which hasn't been done in years, we're going to start working on that as soon as we finish with the new zoning ordinance, however that goes. So things like that need to be included in our comp plan going forward. As we have new developments that come forward in town, I think we need to look at more things for the kids, green space, so kids have places to play other than the roads. Certainly, I think we should have things like basketball courts, not just hot lots. And I'm going to run out of time.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Next, Mr. Brumfield Horner.
So they've touched on housing and a few other things, but I also want to touch on that. But Parks and Recreation is a big focus for me in providing opportunities for parents and kids to get out of the house together, and having our local businesses involved in that somehow by providing opportunities for families to visit local businesses with no cost, allowing them to explore, having activities like we just had, the Hogwarts Alley, like in downtown business. That was a wonderful way to bring in loads of people from out of town. My business was packed, and it was free. This was put on by CRI, and I think that was one of the better-of events that has come out of CRI, and it's integral to bringing business out of town, but also providing kids with an opportunity to do something free with their parents, and they just had a great time. So focusing on ways that the town can help, you know, possibly push those events. And then I'm going to touch on housing and focusing on new family homes and trying to look at land development to pretty much build non-gentrified, like housing, for new and young families to afford. It's no secret that the housing market is very high right now, and our housing prices have like doubled, and I see a lot of people moving from up north to come to Culpeper for the cheap housing, which is driving up the housing. So what we need to possibly do is look at developing sections of land that are just dedicated to certain groups and communities, people who are young families or people who are low-income. Those should be very important, and I think that could help also address some homelessness issues. And keeping the heat shelter open year-round would be a nice start, and that will be my time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Just to clarify one thing, too, so what you're saying is that the Hogwarts event, that was for kids?
Oh, yeah, and adults.
I didn't know.
Hey, you know, I enjoyed it as well.
I bet.
I got, yeah.
Nobody told me that. Okay, very good. Last, Mr. Amos.
You're not going to read me the question? I'm just kidding.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, no. You are, oh, my goodness gracious, you are absolutely correct, Mr. Amos. I apologize. "What issues do you feel are currently underrepresented in town decision-making, and how would you address them?"
I think all of the people sitting up here gave great responses. Many of mine had similar tones. One thing I didn't hear a lot about was enhancing the communications between town and county. During the August meeting, Ms. Schmidt and Mr. Short talked about their starting more outreach to the county. We're a small community. One decision from one group affects the decisions of the other group, so there needs to be better communication between those two groups. Agree fully with Mr. Yow in terms of road safety and sidewalks. As someone who likes to go for runs, there's way too many areas outside of the main downtown that do not have sidewalks. And in terms of providing equity to all citizens, there are a lot of people who don't have vehicles in our community who are having to walk on the roads. So making a plan for how we're going to identify which roads need sidewalks, which ones are the highest and best priorities. As Billy pointed out, the town is very fiscally responsible. They're doing a great job with that. And so with it, we have to set up our priorities, which brings me to kind of one of my next points, which is goal-setting. One of the things that I haven't seen is really when there's a vote within the council and an explanation for why the votes are being made. Generally, there's a motion, and it's just accepted. Nobody understands the thought that happened in closed session. So I think transparency is another big thing. So when people get up to explain why they're making a certain vote, it'd be helpful as a citizen to understand each element that went into that decision, so we as constituents can provide feedback to them as well. Housing is another important thing that we've heard a lot about. There's a lot of push for housing for for certain groups and demographics. We need to provide housing for everybody. My my mom is a is an older woman who is looking to relocate here. It's very hard to find a house for someone in that demographic.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Amos. Now, second question, and what we're going to do is, as I said, we're going to mix it up. Ms. Schmidt, we're going to start with you for this question. Now, the question is, and I will read read it to you, new question. How, Ms. Schmidt, how do you plan to balance long term planning with addressing immediate community needs?
Well, what's the last part of that?
All right, let me read that again.
Okay.
How do you plan to balance long term planning with addressing immediate community needs?
Okay, well, certainly the immediate community needs need to be taken care of first. And as I mentioned earlier, to follow up on that, we're going to be working on the comp plan that goes out for 10 or 20 years. But again, immediately, we need to handle the things that are pressing right now. We have a number of things going on. We have the data centers that are coming into town. We have a street plan that we have. We've looked at all the streets in town and calculated where any fatal car accidents have happened or pedestrian deaths as well. So there's a plan for every street in town, depending on what has happened in that town, to take care of, alleviating those so that by the year 2034, that we have zero deaths from automobiles and pedestrian fatalities. So that's a part of getting started on that. And that all ties in again with the zoning that we're doing as well and with the comp plan. Other immediate things I think that we need to look at right away would be the situation that we have with the roads and the traffic that we have in town and the additional developments that we have that's going to add to the concern for getting traffic moving across towns, going through the nicer neighborhoods.
Great. Thank you. Next, Mr. Short.
Yes, sir. Again, I, questions insightful. Thank you. So, and it is, it is difficult. It's difficult to react to what's happening around you at the same time, keeping that long term vision. I mean, just this evening here, even before I came up on stage, I captured three constituent concerns. I have to work those here over the next couple of days while also planning out the rest of my campaign. And I think I love one of the comments that one of the candidates mentioned last night. She described this event this evening as a day in the life, and that's, I think that's very accurate. This is, this is pretty much what the role looks like. You're trying to plan for future events, yet you're also having to react immediately to the concerns around you. I think you'd be have to be able to do both of those. And I, in particular, love this question because it matches up directly with my my second principle of making sure that we're planning wisely. We can't plan wisely if we're too focused just on what's in front of us without being able to have that long term vision. And there are a few things that we need to be looking out across. Ms. Ms. Schmidt commented that we have a comprehensive plan. We have a few different long term planning documents. We have the comprehensive plan. We have strategic vision plan. There are a few planning documents in there that force us regularly to go back and look at what is that outlook for Culpeper going to look like five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years from now? Everything that we're doing right now today should be building into those long term decisions. At the same time, we can't take our eyes off what's happening right here around us. The earlier question about what are we not thinking of serves exactly, I think, highlights that point. While we're sitting here planning out what we may be doing with data centers over the next 20 to 25 years, there are three homeless guys right now over on Davis Street who could use some more support. And I think we have to be able to balance both of those at the same time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Short. Next, Mr. Sternberg.
Can I have the question again?
Yes, sir. How do you plan to balance long term planning with addressing immediate community needs?
So this is a great question, because it really makes you have to decide what is long term and what do you have to address short term? And so we have a great town council now that has already started the processes of long term planning, short term planning. But my concern is, do we have the right priorities? For example, if something's putting people's lives in danger, we should probably make it a little bit more short term immediate need. So going back to road safety, going back to lighted crosswalks, roads and and crosswalks everywhere, so that, you know, people can drop their kids off of the bus without walking in a ditch. You know, that that is something that I think we should address short term. Something like water quality, you know, there was just a bill that was passed for an emergency generator for the water treatment plant, and it showed the year 26 on there. Well, I'm sorry. I mean, that if it's an emergency, can we get it done quicker? Is this water quality affecting our health? This is something that I think we really need to balance with short term rather than long term, but without taking long term out of perspective. So everybody has an opinion in Culpeper about it growing too fast. Well, that's something that we have to address in the long term by making sure that our infrastructure catches up with the future planned growth and the growth that we already have. Is our water, is our water quality acceptable? Is our electric going to have rolling brownouts and blackouts if we install more communities? If we install data centers? And so these are things that we do need to balance. And as part of town council, you need someone who can juggle all of that, and I'd be more than happy to help you do that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Sternberg. Next, Mr. Yow, let me read the question. How do you plan to balance long term planning with addressing immediate community needs?
Well, we're in the process right now of updating our zoning laws. There's been a lot of community input on that, and the last time that was done was 1968. There's been a lot of talk about data centers and no data centers. Well, we're going to have two data centers and only two. And for the long term planning, hopefully, we're going to get some tax revenue off of that that we'll be able to use, not unwisely, but we're we're going to need a new police station. And hopefully, long term, we can build a new police station with those tax dollars, and that property is right across the street from where the the police station is right now. And water quality is good. A lot of people complain about it, but EPA has put a lot of pressure on us and other communities with a amount of phosphorus and nitrogen that comes out of our water plant after it's been treated. And we're going to, in the process of selling with the new data centers, 750,000 gallons of water a day, we're going to be selling to them for them to cool their infrastructure stuff, and 65% of that will evaporate. So we're only going to have to retreat 35%. I think it's a pressing need that we concentrate more on the recreation in our community, and the new pool coming online with the help of the county. I think it's going to go a long way for that. And as somebody else has alluded to, we're in the process right now of redoing the comprehensive plan. The interaction committee has been revitalized and is working now on a, on a, every, every two months, and the town and county are now discussing issues that had to do with both bodies. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Yow. Next, we're going to go back over here to Mr. Amos.
All right.
Let me, let me, let me read the question again. How do you plan to balance long term planning with addressing immediate community needs?
So to me, I think it's about communication and goal setting. We as a council need to identify what are the pressing issues and communicate it with our constituents. As a public service, that's one of the key things, is making sure that everybody knows what's happening in the town. And so with that, you know, it's a good way to set the goals and test it within the community and make sure that they're in agreement with the items that you see are the most pressing. And with limited resources, it's about identifying those elements and picking out the things that you can take care of day one and which ones need to be moved to another date so you can plan the budgets for coming fiscal years. With a growing community, there's things that need to be thought about in terms of the traffic and congestion. There's also things to think about within our public services. As we grow, we're over 20,000 people now, looking at having recycling services. The volunteer fire department has worked great for us in the past. Is that a model that will continue to work for us as we grow? Those are the things that you have to look at and plan ahead for. And then in terms of the best land uses, we have to make sure that we are providing the individuals' rights to develop their land according to their needs, but also not affecting others in the community adversely. My rights begin where your, my rights end where your rights begin. So it's really important that we look at the way that we're developing our community thoughtfully, because some of the decisions that we make now may have longstanding impacts. You know, the bumper stickers on the back of cars that say farmland lost is farmland lost forever. It's the same thing when we have large mega developments. By developing large swaths of land, it's not going to be something that you're going to be able to redevelop into something else. We know that there's a need for the courthouse within the county, as well as there's some school initiatives. That's not ours, but we need to be communicating those things because they affect the town residents significantly.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Amos. Lastly, Mr. Brumfield Horner.
I couldn't agree more, honestly. The, I kind of look at it like with long term planning is, we look at, you would like medical field, it's triage. You look at the immediate concerns of the town, and you triage those those things that you can do quickly. You know, homelessness, sidewalk safety in roads, those things can be all incorporated into long term planning. Preparing for environmental events that can happen in the town. Right now, we're experiencing, we're going on to experience a draft, or a drought, even though that we are getting a little bit of rain. It's still, you know, we saw what happened a few summers ago with Lake Pelham going down. But yes, talking with constituents on social media is also a thing that we need to do for long term planning, which will help incorporate communication with town council and the needs of the community. And then we we heard some little bit from tax revenues on the data centers. I would like to see those used over time to possibly lower the taxes for the citizens in Culpeper, looking at real estate and property. That's, that's all I have. Everybody touched on everything so well that I, you know, that's, that's all the input that I have along with that, is that just also that with a with the mindness of the the community is pretty much the brain of the town, and that when when there's not a lot to do for people when it comes to kids' activities, and people can get up to no good. So that's, yeah, that's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, it's time for closing, closing statements. So what we're, once again, we're going to mix it up, and Mr. Short, we're actually going to start, start with you. So you now have two minutes to to deliver any final message you'd like to, to the voters of this community.
So my campaign is grounded on the same three principles that I've governed with over the last three years, and that is to make sure that we continue to preserve this small town character and charm. And again, it's not just about aesthetics. We're, we're in an agricultural community, and how great it is to live in a town that you can drive by a house and see four cows roaming around in the side yard. That is awesome. Although I'm still upset about that chicken vote, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, we got to, we got to revisit that. We need more chickens. But that is something special that's very unique to Culpeper, and that's worth continuing to fight for. Planning, we have to continue to plan wisely, and that's the second principle that that I, I, all of our council discussions, committee votes, they all are filtered through this. And so are we planning wisely? Is this decision going to plan wisely for the town as we move forward? You heard Mr. Yow or Vice Mayor talk about the strength of our, our financial area here with the budget, and he's absolutely right. We, we have a great $60 million balanced budget, and I want to use that word again, balanced. That's very important. In fact, the, the budget is so resilient that we're able to slide some additional money over into an emergency fund. And that's vital. That means that if we have an issue, an emergency, a contingency that we have to deal with quickly, we have an emergency fund that we can dip into instead of running to credit. That continues to make sure that we have a resilient budget and economy here in town. And then lastly, our constitutional freedoms. Again, everything sits on top of that. We have to continue to make sure that we're fighting for transparency in government, that we're fighting to make sure that the rights are not infringed, that we're fighting to make sure that our our citizens have a voice in government. Because that's who we are, ladies and gentlemen, we are citizens. You know, we were sitting out there where you're sitting, you know, not too long ago, and somehow we ended up here. So your turn next, but I think that it's important that we continue fighting for what makes Culpeper special.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Short. We're going to bounce around. Mr. Brumfield Horner, you're next.
Yeah, it's been a privilege and an honor to speak to everybody today and anybody watching. I love this town, and I, I, one of the, the, the main principles is fresh new perspectives on, on issues in town that affect myself and my children and my family and my friends. My slogan is common sense leadership, and it's something that I'd like to think that I have some of. But supporting community, strengthening policies aimed at improving community conditions and building trust and fostering sustainable change. I'm, I'm for family growth and development, prioritizing our families and children with more programs, activities, and resources. Small town economic planning, encouraging growth by incentivizing and investing in small businesses, and providing a healthy and safe environment for our citizens is paramount and utmost for responsibilities of town council. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you today, and I look forward to serving you on town council.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Sternberg, you're next, please.
Well, I echo Brian and thanking everyone for being here today and for watching online. I echo his sentiment that we do need fresh faces. We do need fresh ideas. We need, we need critical thinking when it comes to short and long term planning as it relates to what the constituents have concerns about. And we have a, we have a great bunch of candidates this election. A lot of us have the same or similar viewpoints and and campaign points. But I would like to caution you and challenge you, and I would like to ask you to vote for Max Sternberg, because what I bring to the table is the say do ratio. It's something that I've applied to my business, and that is if you say you're going to do something, you do it. You always try and keep that ratio to one to one. If you do a lot more than you say, well, no one's going to see it, and, you know, no one's going to know. And if you say a lot more than you actually do, well, then you sound like a politician for real. But we have a, we have a good setup in Culpeper. You know, like Mr. Short said, about a $60 million budget in the general fund, we're on track to be debt free by 2030. That allows this town to have a lot of cash on hand to address the issues that we have concerns about. Concerns about infrastructure, having the proper infrastructure in place for our growth that we have. Making sure that, you know, we, we keep data centers out of the town if at all possible, and make sure that, you know, that, that money, that fund that they can have, well, maybe the, maybe the county, which is in financial straits, they could use it a little bit better. Maybe improve public safety and address the roads and sidewalks. And as your town councilman, I can do that.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Yow.
Thank you. Well, to reiterate, excuse me, to reiterate, I have a lot of experience on council, and I'm excited to serve my community for another four years if if reelected. Our town is, is, is not at a crossroads as much as it's, it's come, come into the future in a way, and that is because we have a well-run town with a great staff. And some of the things that you maybe you've forgotten about that we've done in the last several years is, we've got, at Lake Culpeper, we have Culpeper Adventures, and a lot of people use that as a recreational facility. We've established Rockwater Park and Splash Park, which has been well received. Once again, I want to reiterate that I've been endorsed by the police benevolence. Once again, I want to reiterate that I've been endorsed by the Police Benevolent Association of Virginia with my, because of my work with the town police force. I've only missed two meetings in 33 years, and I'm never late for committee meetings. I follow through on citizens' concerns with, I either have the answers or find answers for them, or find the solution for them. Once again, I want to thank the chamber and the audience for being here and to listen to us tonight, and I ask for your vote again, either on or before November the 4th.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yow. Next, Ms. Schmidt.
Well, Culpeper is a very special place. I don't have to tell you that, you live here, but we have everything in Culpeper. We have history and heroes, we have rivers and mountains, we have incredible views, we have a strong agriculture background, backbone that we want to keep going. We have battlefields and museums, great restaurants, and a very diverse and all-inclusive community that I'm happy to be part of, and we wonder why people want to live here, come here. It's a wonderful community. Financially, as Mr. Yow has mentioned several times, and others have mentioned as well, the town is in good shape, which I understand hasn't always been the case. We have a great current town staff, and we all work together very well. I heard it written, or I heard it said and written a few days ago that Culpeper has already reached its zenith, and the good days are behind us, and I don't think that's the case at all. We have so many things ahead of us. With the data centers coming and the money that we have coming in from those, I think if we can just bear down a bit and get through that building process, things will be very good for us in the town as far as jobs, well-paying jobs, and extra money to do the infrastructure changes that we want to do and build the roads, and provide more opportunities for our youth here in town as well, different venues. I'm excited about what's on the horizon. I think if we can document that and put that in our comp plan and move forward with that, and as people have mentioned, I think we need to make very much more public the things that we're working on in town. Otherwise, you're not going to know. We talk about these things in committee, but when we get to the regular meeting, a lot of times, those aren't defined, so we can do a much better job with that.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. And lastly, Mr. Amos.
So, as council makes decisions, we need to look at, do these decisions enhance the lives of the community, and do they help with the health, safety, and welfare of the community? Every decision that's made needs to be looked at through that lens. And with that, I've heard a lot about the need for more family activity. So do we provide tax breaks for small businesses that are bringing in bowling alleys or community play places, or do we give tax breaks to large corporations that are bringing in data centers that we may not necessarily need? Culpeper is a very special place, and we need to make sure that those decisions are enhancing it and allowing it to grow in a smart manner. A big role of town is managing the way that we grow, and I feel like, given my background in architecture and planning, I can provide unique insights into highest and best uses of lands, especially as we enter the next phase next year after the comprehensive plan, or in the comprehensive planning stage, interfacing with the planning department, and being able to have those discussions about land use, talking to the county about future annexes and those types of things. Because as we know, with the development of the data centers on Copper Ridge and CTC, the confines of town are very tight. And then with regards to, you know, advancing the health, safety, and welfare of all, there's been a lot of opportunities that have come before council in recent months as it relates to the data centers. The data centers are approved, so how do we make sure that we have minimal impacts on our constituents and our citizens? And there's been several hearings around the noises that they emit, and when there was opportunities to make sure that they followed the current standards, those standards were decided to allow for louder noises than what is currently permitted. So we need to do our best to make sure that if there are changes, that we're getting community input on those changes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Amos. Well, that's it for this session. I just want to say, on behalf of the voters of this community, of which I am one, that I sincerely appreciate, I just get the sense from this group that everybody here does love this community like I do, and I appreciate that. So for those, I appreciate all the work incumbents are doing, I appreciate all the thoughts that have gone into this, that even if you, whether you are elected or not, that I hope you stay, everybody stays involved in the process. And I also appreciate this, both the long- and the short-term work that's going on. You know, it's funny, I've been sitting here thinking, from a long-term standpoint, as you heard from the introduction, I'm originally from New York, but I've lived here longer now that I live there. I've been here 30 years, which is frankly, longer than most of y'all, which also would, the fact that I just used the term "y'all" would hardly amuse my father, who's up there watching at me shaking his head right now. But I just want to tell you that we take this very seriously, so we thank you for how seriously you all take it. And secondly, as a new grandfather, I have a little granddaughter that lives here in this town, so in the short term, I appreciate all the thought and effort that goes into your planning, too, and we all take it very personally. So thank you for all you do, and we appreciate all your time and commitment tonight.